Time being seven thirty, I called the board of-
Try six thirty-five.
We went to daylight savings, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Time being six thirty-five on January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, I called the board of the town of Halifax Planning Board. Members present Mark Melius, Jonathan Soraco, and Lawrence Belcher. On the agenda tonight at six thirty, we have the Pope's Tavern site plan review. At six forty-five, we have three twenty Montponson Street site plan review. We have general discussions for the Halifax Trails multi-family development. Memos for the proposed zoning changes. Memos from the Board of Selectmen, unregistered vehicle permits. Flurried Pond, possible sale of parcel. Pasture Lane, last lot sold currently being held by town. Meetings to attend will be for the Board of Selectmen. January twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen at eight thirty for discussion of bylaws. We have Secretary of Health's payable for ethics certifications, approval minutes, and bills. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so for the Pope's Tavern review.
Hi, how are you?
How are you doing?
John Campbell.
Nice to meet you.
Have you personally walked over these plans? And have you had any problems with them?
We have not had a chance to yet, though.
That's the, uh, this is the side looking from the old, from the old police station to the side.
Okay. Yeah, would you back to the old station?
Yeah, yeah, okay. The front of the building is up here.
Okay.
No, this is the old section. And the, they'll come out here. And then this is the elevator shaft. This is the kitchen, the back of the kitchen. And then this is a large room that you can see on the other plans. This is the park plan. This is the new addition here.
Okay.
This is the existing building. And the parking, we're gonna have to move to the front of the building and off to the back.
And just one quick, these are architects' plans, not entry? Okay.
Uh, this is the first floor of the building. As you can see, a new section, there's gonna be one big room. With a, the kitchen off to the side here in the elevator. Which will be three floors, it'll be a full basement. And as, the building over there across the street now, the second floor is not usable because it's not handicap accessible. So with this project, it'll be usable. And we've restructured some rooms on the second floor. And on the first floor, you have to make all the hallways handicap accessible. And this should not be seen, second floor.
This is the only ones it has, or big plans. Everyone has a set of small plans in their folder.
Yeah. That's the second floor. So do you guys also have a, an engineering plan showing as far as setbacks it looks like?
Uh, setbacks, we were at the zoning board last, last week. And they gave us clearance on the side setback, the front and back are okay.
Okay.
And they also gave us a waiver on the parking because of the size of room. They require sixty parking spaces and there's no way to get them. So they gave us waivers on those. Because the, the say is, the original building is only seventeen feet from the street. So this building is gonna be right straight back.
Alright, so you'll be no closer to the street line than what's there? Okay. Now, did the, the limitation on the, the spaces, does that, did that affect the square footage of the building?
Well, that's what determines the number of spaces that you're supposed to have. And they waived that to, under that because there's no way to get them over there.
And also, John, that if need, when given for events, you have parking within a certain distance.
Okay. Alright, yeah, so they didn't limit the size or the amount of people because of additional parking available?
Yeah, they realize if the town say you're having a, a bag but it's gonna hold for actually sixty people. That's probably very, probably the forty cars, but if you had fifty cars, then you'd have to move over to the town hall here.
Or the library.
Or the library, yeah.
I wanna have more handicap spaces for that.
Well, in fact, I think, um, you want me to bring this up? Jerry, or do you want? Rob, leave a note for them.
For?
About the handicap?
Yes. I put it on a sheet for that, so it's good.
Okay. I had a comment.
But John, the, what, to explain, I mean, we're getting the note, but you don't have that. Um, Rob talked to me earlier today, what he said is that for the handicap parking, he thinks that the town needs to follow the rules for how many needs, even on the basis of fifty-seven, not the reduced number. So we actually need a third handicap parking space. The two spaces that are nearest, that are shown there, can serve as the van spaces which we're required out. Because that sort of island, it's not an actual island, but it's a empty space that's large enough so that the vans can-
That's just striped?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That can, those are the first two, and they can serve as the van. What Rob suggested is that the spa, the, um, section of parking that's closest to Plymouth Street, that one of the spaces in the corner closest to the main driveway be a third handicap spot.
Okay.
Probably we are going to wanna reconfigure the walks, not the ramps, but the walks to the ramps. So that person or persons who are in that, using that space, don't have to go out of the parking lot, down the driveway, and back into the paths. Also, by reconfiguring the paths, I strongly suspect probably in the long term, you're going to increase the number of handicap parking spaces even from two or three to four, or five, or six. Those additional spaces can go along that, in that lot. And by reconfiguring the walks, all those spaces will have easy access to the walkways and then to the ramp system, without having to go out of the driveway, which can be uneven at times and dealing with gravel and things like that.
Yeah, well, we probably should have a high surface walkway out of that parking lot anyways.
So, um, that would be, how would you resolve the handicap issue? We would add a third parking space to, in that one, with the provision that if, just as we did here at town hall, we ran for, in this parking lot here for a long time, or two. And just, some of it is because of the council and aging using it for events, some of it is we had even employees who needed handicap parking or allowed, you know, they had blockers or whatever. Um, we increased the number of part, handicaps parking spaces here, even though we legally didn't have to at that point. We just said, we're getting demand. And it may be in the long term, you'll get a demand with the council and aging.
It may need them over there more.
Yeah, I would almost expect.
Yeah.
And we could connect that, this walkway coming out of here right over to these other walkways anyways.
Okay, and that'd be actually, it would serve that whole, those fourteen spots?
Right, so they had, ended up with all handicap across here. Then we'd have a walkway coming down.
Okay.
Into this area. That's a decent call.
That's directly adjacent to the, on either side of the handicap spots?
Uh, which ones? This one here?
Yeah, well, there's only the two over there.
Well, these two here, this is the driveway that goes-
No, I mean, uh, to the left and to the right of it, you seem to have-
Oh, there's a grass area there.
Okay.
That could be made wider too, when you put in there.
Put on a handicap spot, yeah.
Yeah, we probably could squeeze two more in there anyway.
And that one, that's the whole ramp side there.
This is a tight, it was a tough lot to put an adhesion on.
If we put handicap spots there, there's no ramps on that side?
Over here.
Okay, you'd have to either go down and then around the back of the building, or go up, or?
No, 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 across the-
Right here?
Right.
Yeah, no, that's, um, handicap accessible.
Oh, that's a ramp right there.
Yeah, I think it is. There is, there is one on the front door too.
That's the existing, yeah.
I only got that one. That looked like gravel to me.
There, there is a handicap-
Is there no gravel right here then? Right here?
I think that's, that's the walkway that, uh-
Right, and then the ramp starts here and then goes around?
Well, that's the existing ramp now.
Right.
But this is a ramp coming in here.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, I just thought the, the shading was-
Yeah, shading must just, just differentiate between old and new.
Yeah, that's not a walk, that's not a walkway, but we do have a ramp coming in.
Basically every entrance.
I just couldn't see a point, if there was just gravel there, but-
Yeah, actually, we, we required for the, uh, a door in the big room too, and a second access. So there'll actually be a ramp here too.
Okay.
Yeah, it's coming in, it comes in this way.
You wouldn't happen to have a list of what the zoning board has already granted you, do you? I don't know if there were things other than the handicaps, just it'd be easier if we knew what things were already excluded.
There was setbacks in, because there's two frontages.
Yeah, it's, it's basically street, you have two street setbacks.
And I believe they varied the, uh, number of parking spaces. It, it didn't make mention of handicap on, as far as I can recall on the application.
I'll have to have her look at it because this, uh, letter of approval that doesn't mention anything about reducing the parking.
I think the application does.
I don't remember.
Does that say?
Okay, it does.
A variance in the special permit?
The variance was granted from the front setback on South Street. That's, that's all I see there.
Because the only real setback problem is South Street.
Well, the front had no, is a street, but it was far enough back, so it was no variance needed.
And you're also not encroaching any closer than?
No.
What was interesting?
And what was the special permit issue for?
Which granted?
Because of variance for the, um-
No, the special permit, not the variance.
No conforming, I believe.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Now, is this also, this is inside the historic?
It's in the historic district, yeah. Which they've been contacted. And as long as we leave the, the front of the building existing as it is, and the chivvies on the, on the roof, they were quite happy.
Okay, so they had no questions about the design? Yeah, unfortunately, on this, I don't see anything in regards to the parking spaces.
I'll check it on Monday, so you can have a look for the minutes on Monday.
Yeah, just to, just to make sure that it's, it's official.
And we can, uh, these are ninety-nine percent done, these plans. So once we add these handicap spaces in there, if we're doing it very particular, we can- That seems to be the only problem we have.
Yeah, I, I think if, that's, if that's the plan to add another one or two, um, maybe you can have them consider the, the green spaces here, would, I think would be nice to keep. And if we could designate a few of these here and provide the ramp.
And somewhere come in with a walkway in here.
I'm actually, I'd rather see the green space go away and give them all parking right, right there altogether.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be difficult if you had no, no curb or break between, you know, if you had traffic flowing.
That's why they brought this out here, to show that the-
Yeah, I think it helps with the flow of traffic. Um, I think it would, it would be too open without that.
I just wanna make sure that you have at least one van accessible. Basically, it can larger.
Alright.
Well, that's what the, that's-
The striping.
In that, I see no issues.
No issues, okay, good. Very good, well, we'll get that done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, good luck.
So where does that leave everything for the next meeting? Or when would they do a site plan approval, or is the next meeting to do that, or?
Yeah, if they're gonna update the plan. Just to see what, what configuration.
Everybody'll check on that whole parking variance as well.
Yeah, I'd like, just to confirm that it's-
No, that's fine, I just wanna make sure, I mean, I don't want John thinking, okay, everything's done, and walk out and- Just everybody's on the same page.
You gotta do that, Charlie.
So if you have the updated plans, let us know, we'll put you on the next available meeting.
Yeah, I'll see the architect tomorrow, so I have to put that-
Okay. Our next meeting is February first.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
February first is your next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, give me pop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. We have, uh, Valentine's Day, the, the Monday before Valentine's.
If you wanna keep this, this is-
Thanks, Charlie.
Sure.
Thanks, Charlie.
For Charlie? Well, I think, uh, as far as the bylaws and stuff like that, um, we can-
Heather, come on in. You here for three twenty Montponson?
Yes.
Excellent, good timing.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. So I know you were in before, but we had a snow day and-
Yeah.
I don't think anybody wanted to go out that night.
No, I did, went up three days, we fought.
Ah, yeah, fought.
Yeah.
Now we have, I haven't got media, but I should, just so you know.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just, well, this one- If we need to, oh, skills, pretty good.
Okay, so this is the site from Walmart?
Yep.
Driveway here, entrance?
The front the house, and we just wanna put that garage right here.
Okay.
And, uh, get a, a parking spot in that area, if that's okay. And, uh, inside a fence here, and I like to park the, uh, the truck. And I get all the trucks right here, so how many trucks and all the registration, if you guys know how many's gonna be there?
Okay. Now, this part here has been used for vehicles before, it's already been improved, yeah?
Yes, yeah, they're like, being parked with a bunch of stuff up here, but I don't think they ever sell anything. But it's still the name of the jail up there, and every turn the doors.
That was all dirt and gravel, right?
Yes.
It wasn't paved at all?
No, no, it's all-
It was just gravel?
Yeah. We started to clean it up, like ninety-nine percent is almost clean already. And, uh-
Nice.
We're gonna be working out for a little bit before this happens, or see if you guys prove that for us. And we're gonna have somebody design a building for us, we'd be looking good.
Okay, so right now, the only real change is just the building, which seems to-
Is there any fencing going around here too? Like all around here, is it gonna still be open park?
It's gonna be, because-
Nothing blocking this, though.
No, no.
Nothing along this property.
Because that, that's like, uh, kinda like a driveway goes through Walmart.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, kinda like, you see the view when people come by and see the cars up there.
Oh, yeah, having the visibility, so having the visibility.
And we're gonna give like, good like fifteen feet, probably between twelve and ten feet, make a nice landscape, with beautiful trees, some beautiful lawn in the front. And a few one, I can have the landscape design something, especially I wanna be doing that, this is ideal for live.
I feel like when he, when, not you, but when the previous one came in, he had a garage that he was proposing to.
He never did it.
Yeah.
He never built it.
He just never built it?
No.
So is this, this is essentially the same plan I do, same?
Same plan, I just changed where the garage is gonna be, you know? He's, he's one of the garages like too close to Walmart.
Yeah.
And I, but, yeah, our garage should be like more close to the house, because I'm gonna be living up there, and I don't have to be doing too much change and that.
Yeah. Close.
Yeah.
It's forty by twenty-five, how big is that?
Uh, forty feet by twenty-five?
Yeah, square feet.
Eight thousand square feet?
What?
Eight hundred square feet?
Yeah.
Eight hundred?
Or no?
Eight twenty?
Twenty.
You, I'm nitpicking here, you got a sign here, you, you've, you've looked at your sign, the sign bylaws and everything like that, make sure that your sign's gonna be-
Yeah, we, actually, uh, was just a piece of woods up there, and some stuff we removed.
I didn't even know that there's a piece of wood there.
Yeah, it's still up there, like true ones up there, but we're gonna talk about it when the time come. And it's a drainage right there too, and it's here, I wanna, before we do anything, I wanna rebuild our round, put safety rocks on, and one that they never got clogged. Because it's, uh, one of the, it's very important to be clean up there. I saw, from the day one I bought, it's a lot of leaves, a lot of branches, everything-
Everything collects right there?
Yeah, I need to do a little better job in that.
What type of business is this gonna be?
Uh, landscaping, oh, sorry, uh, it's ready, application, okay. Those are for home.
So the, the garage, it isn't gonna service anything for the vehicles here? That's just gonna be where you park your things for work and?
And I'm gonna do, uh, work inside the garage.
Okay.
You know, so I wanna do that.
So you're gonna have an office inside the house?
No, the office is gonna be a little trailer.
Okay, we're gonna have to find out if that's gonna be allowable or not.
Okay, that, that's okay with me. If it's not, uh, we make our office, now, because this is a big house.
Yeah, okay, so then the ten by twenty office trailer here?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing is, you can make the house an office space, and you go in front of the zoning board to get, uh, oh, it's commercially zoned.
Yeah, we can do it back right, as long as the resident is the same as the business owner. And you run the business. Basically, you're the owner of the property, you're the resident of the property.
Yes.
You're the runner, you run your business.
Exactly.
All in one.
All in one, that's gonna be all me.
Okay, just to clarify that.
So as far as the, the office trailer, is that something that, it stays on wheels, or is that?
Uh, we, they have like a couple different options.
Okay.
And I wanna get a, a good looking one.
Okay.
I don't know the size, which one you get, but it's just like, it's kinda like that size, we're gonna be, if we get approval, that's something like that size, we gotta put it up.
Yeah, so I'd have to check in just to see what we have for-
For that, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
It's also a ten feet, which I would like.
Yeah, so check it out, and whatever you guys think of me-
Yeah, I don't know if we have permitted trailer bylaws.
Yeah, I, I don't know if the top my-
But I don't know if we do for, for- for-
Yeah, like if they were to set up on a subdivision temporarily, or-
Right, or when they're doing Walmart or shop and shop, you have construction trailer, but it's only there for, uh, temporary until the, you know, the establishment is built.
True, yeah.
So we'll have to find out about that.
Yeah, that, that, there's not a big deal, uh, you know, we can make that happen in the future.
Okay, okay. So you're gonna be selling vehicles and running your landscaping out of the same?
Yeah, it's, the landscape is not gonna be nothing, just the trucks, we only park the trucks, no piles, uh, no much, no, nothing up there. The trucks just gonna be parked right there.
Okay, yeah, so the next stop, yeah?
Yeah, I get out of the way, because we're here, because I don't know how many there is, uh, insurance and everything, from the insurance company, how many cars.
Oh, okay, just, yeah, so then won't be unregistered vehicles and?
Exactly, and actually, I just changed everything for garage up there already, but, uh-
Okay.
This is, uh, all been ready. If you guys making sure everything, insurance is not, it's gonna be up there, we have insurance and all the cleats and everything on there.
Yeah, because the, uh, the unregistered vehicles would be a separate issue.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, well, that, they go to the selectmen for, um-
Yeah, but then they get-
Class two license.
Right.
So basically, you guys can determine how many vehicles they can have, or recommend to the board of selectmen, what you think is, uh, reasonable, um, along with how many vehicles and equipment you're gonna be storing there for your other, the landscaping business?
Uh, it dips already, there's no more than that.
Okay, well, I don't, no.
Oh, you don't, I'm sorry, alright.
No, that's not for me to do, that's not, that's not for me to do.
Yeah, I can give you exactly, uh, how, you know, it's gonna be true dump trucks and true, three trucks, it's like five trucks and, uh, three trailers.
And, and no office space, there won't be people working out of the building? Like, if you're the resident, you can, you have, you can feel free to be, spend as much time as you wanna-
Yeah, that, that's, it's only gonna be-
As far as employees?
Yeah, it's not gonna be like, people working on the garage or anything, it's like, if I buy a car in action, I need a true repair or something.
So basically, there's five spaces here for his landscaping vehicles.
Right, okay.
So you would have to minus that out from what he is-
Wouldn't count for the vehicles that you could get for-
And then you have to provide for, um, customer parking, so I don't know how many vehicles you could actually sell. We're gonna have to figure that out.
Can, can we keep the cars, like, in the back here? And that size, if we have to, like, for the, for the trailers, or like, for, for the landscaping, like, I put a fence up here and they'd be inside the fence? And we leave like the twenty-one cars and that?
You'd have to actually probably pay, because then you'd have to go to, wouldn't you have to go to conservation at that time?
Only if this one happens.
Yeah, I don't, it's not-
It's not, it's not whether or not we check away, we supposed to have, uh, twenty-five percent on green. And if here, we get like around thirty-six, even if we do, if we get this all, uh, supposed to be gravel driveways and we put the garage up, we still have twenty-six percent on green, by the way, right?
How many were approved for them before, for that lot?
Twenty-one.
That was year twenty-one before?
Not, and not, and not if we allow one lot to be sold.
Okay, yeah, I think was twenty-one, it's a park spot, I think was.
Okay, yeah, because now you're-
Because that's in the same area, let's see what we already approved once.
So, so you're gonna do, I'm just kinda curious, you're gonna do landscaping as your main bus, as the main business, and then have, and sell cars on the side?
Exactly, yeah, it's not gonna be like a deal twenty-four hours, my wife is gonna be there doing this stuff.
Okay.
And I be doing my, my landscaping thing, like, I got up in the morning, go do that, if I have like, one car or two, I buy an action, I have to fix it, I wanna be able to put it in.
Okay. So as far as the office trailer here, no, no employee?
No, we not, we don't wanna get like, nothing big, we just wanna be able to be relaxed and, you know, do things, make a little money and-
And then keep, keep that separate from the house?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, that's one thing.
Zoning approved, because it's gonna have to go to zoning for this as well. Um, fourteen for used vehicle sales.
Okay.
Seven spaces for customers and handicap and employees.
Okay.
Right, so it goes with-
So that all takes into account your employees.
So it's twenty-one, and gonna have to take that down.
You have employees coming in to park their vehicles to take your equipment out, right?
Yeah, they, when they moved it-
So that all comes into play.
Uh, okay, I thought they, when they moved the car, they put their car up there. Yeah, but you guys decided what's your best way to go with that.
Well, that's, that's what I've got here on, for the last guy. Um, fourteen for used vehicle spaces and seven spaces for customer handicap employees.
Yeah, so they're breaking it down here, you, you're gonna need six just because of the size of the building.
Yeah, because if you got a huge, you know, landscape, you lose the- the employees with the landscaping.
One employee, but that was for the previous guy, he was running the landscaping. See, it says here that you have the-
Service bays.
The service bay.
You got quarters with these car sales, right?
It's like fixing cars, though.
But I, I think service bay-
We didn't, I don't, I think there was a-
Well, that was in the- Commercially fixing B A.
I remember him being A. That's what you said, um, I mean, how, how do you determine the verbiage of that?
Well, at the end of the day, we don't have to make that decision, do we? That's the selectmen.
Yeah.
No.
I mean, we kind of walked, we walked through that guy down the street, but so.
That's where everybody's sure.
Okay, yeah.
Fourteen for.
His service base.
Sale.
Yeah.
Seven for parking for employees, customers, and one does needed handicap parking.
It went through like a.
That's what we approved last time.
That's.
Okay, that's what we approved for that lot before.
Yeah, that that's uh like this space not offer too much, if I go too much, I have to go up behind the house, I don't wanna be there, I think that's more than enough.
So.
Right.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, if we can get that approved, that'd be great, this is uh, you know.
Yeah, I'd say especially if you have this configuration for everything, plus you're gonna get, it looks like they're giving you two. For the service bay, you're gonna have two two bays or it's forty feet long.
Yeah, for it, and that's we we get we get the trucks with the trailer, that's like awkward, I get in, I get on some like let's say, finish my day, just throw in my trailer, my truck.
Three days. Yeah. Yes, you don't have to break it down or whatever.
Exactly, and leaving it right there.
So is it just, you're gonna have t- two two large bay doors and probably one service door?
Yeah. Exactly, it's small, uh it's small like that, or maybe just like if it's gonna be like this, we can just get one big door right here and another big door right here and just drive right in.
Yeah, so so that's what's gonna.
It's it's got a space in there, okay.
It's, yeah.
We probably gonna do this way.
Okay.
Okay. Go in and.
And then just make sure that they took into consideration that, you know, whatever you have, forty foot radius or whatever you have on a, you know.
Uh-huh.
Dual axle trailer, you're gonna have to just make sure that you can.
To space there. You can fit it there, swing right there.
You can swing that.
Yeah.
Um.
Does it look like we got sixty four here, I don't know how much it is, but it's.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so between, so if you had cars parked there, you'd have thirty four. So. Like I said, I'm not sure what.
Well, that that.
How big the trails are, which which would work in him, but I think you should.
No, it's not like big big trucks, they are they are seventeen feet uh long and fast that truck.
Okay.
You know.
Sixteen. Yeah, sometimes it could still be tight though.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless you're an expert trailer driver.
Yeah, we.
I was just gonna say, if you drive it like me.
Yeah.
Because normally speaking, if he's backing in trailers, cuz I know you don't wanna just pull in and then in the morning start off your day by trying to back out a trailer.
Yeah. No way.
So you're gonna come in, you're gonna drive over here, and you're gonna have to try and back it in like fifteen times probably.
And.
Yeah, no.
It's gonna it's gonna be tough, it's tough.
It's not us, not, we don't have to worry about it though.
No, I'm just saying.
We're just making a proposal based on. Yeah, my recommendations, just make sure that.
Yeah.
The space gonna be.
Don't wanna make your life difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if I can, well, when I put the car, the the trailer is come this way and gotta like go in here and.
That's another option, yeah.
Yeah, cuz it's go in, go right here, like this is all was was the way to plan it out, this is a, we just want a big door right here, you know, the big one.
Well, I think. Yeah, I'm not see, I'm not sure if you're gonna get two oversized bays in the twenty five.
Yeah. Maybe just one is fine.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe just one is fine, you go in and park one truck, I'll go in and park another one, that's it.
Okay.
Uh and I can just reverse them, I don't have to go out there anything.
And the garage is to be doing repairs on the cars?
Uh if we uh that'd be great.
Okay, well, we don't approve that, the zoning board would have to approve that.
Okay.
For.
Cuz if I buy like a broken car, they have the suspension and I need it repaired, I don't wanna be working it, you guys come shut me down.
Yeah, yes, you know, I don't much, I'm not sure how that works, if he's the owner of the vehicle on his property in his garage.
It's technically a business to do repairs.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And we'd rather do it right than not.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Still not for us.
No, it's zoning.
Right.
But we would still have to say, okay, but you need to do, we would still recommend him to go to zoning board for certain things.
Yeah. Alright, yes, we have to go and making sure we do the safety way.
Really, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like you said, you don't wanna.
No, I don't wanna be playing around, yeah, I don't wanna be working over there and somebody is gonna come and knock my door, you doing something, it's what you gonna.
Yeah, that's why definitely is you will hash it out first, so I'd say the the thing that I will have to take some time on is to figure out about the office trailer.
Okay.
Just to make sure, um like I said, I don't know if it's worth, um.
If it's a problem.
Having them double check just to make sure that you got whatever.
Yeah. Enough room to put the doors and everything in, but you have to back up the trailer.
Yeah.
And my other options, if it I can do the trailer, I can use the basement, you know, make the office in the basement, cuz there's a door right here, exit door right here.
Oh, okay.
And that's where he have actually everything in that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he I remember he was working on.
Yeah, he's uh kinda like the basement is finishing and look and the he's still in the door, you know, like Halifax or car.
Right.
Yeah, so if you wanna do this, I don't wanna stay away, obviously that would be much easier, you know, but if you wanted to pursue that, you can definitely look into that.
Uh-huh. Okay. Yeah, so that'd be great.
Yeah, there's any.
He's only got nineteen spaces on there, so we have to go off of that.
Yeah, so that's why I'm not sure.
Well, I remember when we approved the last one, this is the vehicle display area, he was counting that as parking spots as far as.
Yeah.
One or two for uh for.
I'm just.
Vehicles.
I'm just concerned about the breakdown, once we take into consideration, there's one for you, five for spots, five for.
Yeah.
Well, he doesn't have to park there.
True.
Out of out of the house, I can I have my old driveway which parking on front.
Yeah. He just walks out his door.
If we take out the five for landscaping vehicles, I think that's. I I think that deducts from your your total as far as, cuz you're gonna have five for that. Six that you're gonna need. Yeah, so there's at least eleven, that really only leaves you eight spots. That's what I'm saying, like if.
So if we add the eight spots for used cars plus the area proposed for display, that would be what, ten?
Ten.
Yeah, just to keep that into consideration, you may also wanna consider, like this looks like they they squared this up.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
But but to give you some way, if they extend this.
Uh-huh.
And maybe this is your spot to pull in back in trailers or trucks.
Okay. Well, you know, I can talk to him, maybe we can change this way right here, park everybody this way, we come in a little bit, cuz it's gonna be kinda like a defense from Walmart, it's come all the way to here.
Yeah.
You know, it can be like park just a landscaping cars like under the fence, and we need the display car from right here that way.
Yeah, just cuz you know, cuz here it's open, but we gotta assume that we're dealing with, you know, a car in all of these, so it's easy to say, hey, I'd swing in, but.
Okay.
You know, if everything's going good, you're gonna have cars out there, then it, so we gotta we gotta assume that.
Exactly, yeah.
It, you know, or just make sure that it will function with a vehicle in each thing, to make sure that we don't, you know, short any at the end, where you're like, oh sweet, I can't get my trailer in and out easy. You know, you don't you don't want, you you certain, you can't be backing into fifty eight anyway, but just so you don't have a bottleneck where everything comes in.
No. Okay, and. Can I have him moving and park my trucks in the back of the house? And we leave the space just for the dealer, and we add it up right here for the park the trailers in the back.
The only thing about that is if you're adding more parking, it looks like you're based off of. Your fifty nine percent is green space, which lowers the square footage. And spaces if. So you have less parking spaces because you're still more than that forty five percent, so just one more thing, just to keep into consideration.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
So I I definitely say you could, it it just make sure that that number doesn't exceed, and then it doesn't require you to have more parking space.
Okay. Alright.
But it it seems like if you had more room back here, now you you you're possibly coming in and backing something in, that that's how I'm kinda picturing it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I know they had a bunch of vehicles parked.
Yeah, it's like all the machines and that, yeah, yeah.
And why. Yeah. So.
Okay, so this is this is for the trailers and. A mobile homes used as an office incidental to construction on the premises.
That's not that.
Is restricted for six.
That's the only case.
And then they have trailer hook used as dwelling.
It's not a dwelling either.
Temporary until a house is built, we don't allow them for a dwelling dwellings.
Oh, that's not, but it's not used as a dwelling.
Uh, yeah, or other than that, and you'd have to be in in a shed.
Oh, park.
Yeah.
I almost wonder if it's like a shed.
requirements?
But yeah, hey, that's looks good, I mean, just guess a couple of questions to me, so.
How it be easier just to build a shed for an office?
Right.
Yeah, you probably get away with building a shed, a lot easier, seriously, and probably cheaper too.
Mm. Yeah, of course, you have the shed, it's a lot cheaper, you know, you can make up a kinda small house.
The only thing is you gotta insulate it, heat it, if you wanna be out there for a little bit or something.
And do. Yeah, but it's the easy thing to do.
You actually have the trailer too.
Yeah, he's gonna.
All trailers, I mean, but a trailer usually comes insulated.
Yeah, most of them are insulated in and the trailer.
Yeah. Yeah.
They even even a little electric kick space or something.
Yeah, it's uh.
You can get away, what can you get away with for a a shed now, the E five ten?
Up to three, up to three hundred square feet. Anything over that is considered a barn, and then you have different setbacks.
Yeah, if it's, if it's so small, I don't even believe we need a permit for anything.
Barn or garage.
Yeah.
Two hundred square feet, almost you don't need. But you still have to put here to the setbacks.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, really, you mean with that size?
Mm-hmm.
The sidewalk's not that far, it's only, I think it's what, ten feet from the side?
Setbacks?
For uh for.
Um ten feet off the side, yeah.
Yeah, and that's ten feet.
Yeah. No, that's more than that, it's about like a more than fifteen, it's like.
Yeah. But that's what I'm saying, you you got you got your, you you have the right.
Right.
To put a shed up there.
Area to put your, to put a decent sized shed.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Although you can't put a shed in front of the house.
Yeah, that's the thing, I I was thinking that, it's gonna look very silly, you know, you got a shed right there, I have to make a small little house, make the shed look like the house, you know, it's a little different.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You can't get a shed in front, you can't put a garage in front, so you might be looking at more hurdles.
Yeah, I was thinking if it's like a little bit more in this way, being the same line of the house, it might look a little bit, yeah, but it lose too much space in that, in that.
Yeah, not break the front.
And I.
And maybe we.
So I I would, it's up to you.
Yeah, maybe I'm gonna, you know, just delete that, and we put the uh in the basement, the same way he had before.
Or you could possibly look at.
If if you got the room.
It's probably right.
Yeah.
Sort of like that in the basement.
Yeah.
You know, just a a thought and make a.
Put two more spaces there, can you?
A bump out from the garage and put the office right in the garage.
Uh. Oh, that's another option.
Yeah, that's that's a good idea.
I think twelve, what do you need, like ten by ten or twelve, like twelve?
Yes.
Yeah, it's it's.
Yeah, that's hopeful, yeah, it's only ten by twenty there, so even if you, yeah, even if you just bump this out, and then another thing to consider again is is which, once you figure out the building.
It's an option, it is behind the house.
Yeah. Yeah, where the doors in it.
That you're gonna go with, and then you can figure that into the the plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
And where the trailer proposed is is not a parking space.
Not a parking space, yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe you can get rid of these parking spaces and maybe you get your.
Yes.
You know, there's things to consider.
And then. Yeah, and then all of this will be green, green space, actual.
Yes, yes, everything on the side right here and all, this is where the drain, I wanna pick out that drain very well.
Yeah.
And up right here too, it's gonna be all green, coming here from the house and the sides.
Okay.
Get the driveway, it's gonna be full on in there.
Okay, so you wanna work on that and come back?
Okay.
If you guys don't mind.
Not planned.
Not planned at all.
No, I just say, you know, as is up, I just wanna get in, you know, because making sure I'm working and stuff, I just don't wanna be playing around, but.
To do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the usual process on these is you would bring the plans and everything to me ahead of time, cuz it actually has to go out to all the different departments for their.
Uh-huh. Yeah. We do that.
Recommendations and then um get their feedback and then we can come back here.
We can. That's what I feel.
And that could be a little bit longer of a process, but I try and push it though, as best I can.
I appreciate that, yeah, that'd be awesome, and uh, yeah, well, I'm gonna work on this uh tomorrow, I'm gonna go see him again, and then we do some change in this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And he's free out a little bit better than that, cuz uh this is my first time doing stuff like that, it's kinda hard for me, I don't even know what things go, and I just go by what they telling me, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, let's.
Questions always come up as things get changed, so.
Exactly, yeah, and we we have, you know, look for the answers and make sure we do the right thing.
Okay.
Thanks, alright.
Well, good luck.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Keep all those together, so nothing gets lost.
Yes. Yeah.
And.
You guys wanna keep a copy for now?
Yeah, if we could just, and then we could always refer to what we have and.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's okay, I see what I can do more.
Thank you so much. Yeah, good luck.
Good luck guys, right now, you're going.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, so the next up Halifax Trails, Halifax Trails.
Um.
I always thought that Halifax Trails was right near the the like history thing, right by the blacksmith, I thought always that was Halifax Trail.
Cuz they used to have a weird sign in there.
It says Halifax Trails.
I'm pretty sure. That's fine.
Well, I mean, I bought it, so I kinda know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh basically, we've had just a a couple of um inquiries in regards to the site plan um approval and um who should have signed. The site plans and what was approved, and there wasn't a signature block, so no one actually signed the plan, so we may wanna just got required.
But we've now re-voted and approved it, and didn't sign, or didn't sign?
Yes. Cuz there was no signature.
Yeah, but, uh, okay.
Gotta take myself out of that one, cuz I don't think I.
Anyway, it was just for um.
So they weren't able to record it, correct?
Questions to answer. Um, well, I don't think um site plans of those of like each of these to be recorded.
Oh, okay, yeah, alright, it was, cuz it was just the site.
So the engineer has been asking questions because it looks like the property is up for sale again, and they're questioning, you know, the coordinates and site plans and who approved them.
Yeah.
They were thinking zoning board was the, should have been the signature block, but they're not, they don't approve site plans, we do.
Right.
So there's just a little bit of that, so we probably wanna get something um as far as procedure to make sure that. Any site plans that come in, that we have a signature block, just so, you know, similar to subdivisions that.
Yeah.
We can see this was the plan that was approved, so there's no question as to.
Yeah.
Which one's been approved by us, by zoning.
Cuz we, yeah, we just call it out by date or title on the plan.
Right.
And the verbal approval. Okay, I agree with that, it's easier, and then that way. That shouldn't happen again. Okay, so next we have proposed zoning changes for in our apartments.
And this is all going in the selectmen meeting anyway?
Yes, um and the board of selectmen are hoping that a couple members from the planning board, couple members from the zoning board can attend the meeting on Tuesday night, the twenty third.
Yeah, I think I can make it.
I will, I will try.
Yeah. What's what's up with under- registered vehicles?
Oh, okay, so.
Oh, Mark has it.
It's allowed that you can have one unregistered vehicle.
Okay.
If you have more than one, you can actually go to the board of selectmen to get unregistered vehicle approved. And they're asking that uh planning board, they actually ask everybody zoning board, uh zoning officer, um if we have any. Issues or if they're gonna require anything additional to this stuff, do you have any?
Okay.
Did you?
I don't know.
I should thought it was special.
Well, I I think I had it on top of the book.
I had it listed, so you just.
Oh.
Yeah, yep.
Alright, so. So before the meeting, they're just looking to see whether or not we will require.
If you if you have any requirements too.
Okay, so, alright, we got property? So January eighth, board of selectmen has received the attached application from Oscar Magnuson for a multiple unregistered vehicle permit for a maximum of two vehicles on property located at thirteen Eleventh Avenue.
So he wants to have a second unregistered vehicle on his property?
Yep, so.
He's gonna prepare.
Yep, just for for repair. So.
The Volkswagen cemetery there. You're doing that place?
Hmm?
Oh, the place, yeah. The Volkswagen cemetery?
Hot on fire, I do believe that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I forgot. Boy, they can talk about a lot of stuff, which they're. Is he, is he repairing the vehicle, or is he poking thoughts about other vehicle?
Alright, the only.
Some, that's what they do.
Let's, what I'm wondering is if this permit is for. To, any duration of time, or if this is an open ended?
It's open ended.
The. I assume my buddies will be notified and have a chance to speak, I I don't know what the process is. Only just thinking, if somebody's got. Say a five thousand, twelve foot lot, they have say two or three vehicles that they drive, and then we permit them for two more, like is that? Is that good? Without any information, it seems like, okay, all they're asking for is one extra car to work on, that doesn't seem bad.
Right.
But.
I don't think we have anything that I was complaining for unregistered vehicles.
Yeah. It's not in our purview.
Change the, change the work for today.
I know, well, I'm missing Carlos.
Let's see if there's anything unregistered.
Okay, so.
Is he gonna, we gotta.
To the.
Those are a bit different. I don't think so. Basically just asking, does it require any?
Alright, so.
Does it require a new site plan?
This, this is to verify the following application, which will be.
Require a new site plan?
Thirteen eleventh Ave. Does not require a new site plan and has no restrictions on the permit?
Here, put a sign on it. If you're without word of it.
I think permits just to make sure that we can start creating junkyards.
Or.
Hmm.
And with the permit, again, I don't know if it's open ended or. What, um.
Do we use that terminology in there?
Well, I would say that we all have to. Come up with whether or not we wanna do a site plan and permit and all sign it, I assume we'd have to make a motion to. Endors and.
I don't think it needs anything.
Okay.
If I'm honest, well, he's uh.
I will.
You want me to sign it?
Okay, right.
I think you have to fill out the whole thing.
No, no.
Well, at the top, if there's no requirement upon, if there is.
It does not. No restrictions. Let me read it before you. Yeah, they got a whole public hearing, see, public.
So then, yes, the butters are probably being notified.
Yeah. We talked about that.
Larry Vel, Larry Belcher said that it is okay.
Fine.
During a public here.
There you go.
Thank you.
It's this one.
Same thing.
Same thing. You're good at this.
Different person?
Mm-hmm.
Derek Downey. Him, I'm gonna deny. No requirement, no restriction. The people who actually go through a permitting process, that I don't worry about, it's the ones who have fourteen cars and they want, and they're like, what are you gonna do about it?
Alright. Um, actually, that's. When is a building permit required?
Yeah, it's just something that we need to put into our, um, nothing before we go into our bylaws, cause we actually don't have anything stated that you have to.
I guess this is. I think that's a tough one, because, I mean, there there are certain things, like if you look at what type of things, like if you wanted to repaint the wall of your house.
That's altering it, meaning building.
Do you need new buildings there?
Right.
Was it just structural?
Unless it says.
It's structural.
Okay, but what would you consider structural in a sense?
Windows, doors.
Deciding, deciding structural, how is that structural, it's only on the side?
Well, that, that's actually part of um making sure that anything that's being taken off the house, that's um spo, it's disposed of.
But you see how that can be argued?
No, I absolutely, you can talk to um, you know, the BBRS if you'd like.
I, I mean, I'm just, I I I kinda just look at it, I'm, I I think it, to me, it is just a lot of gray area that you say that is structural. People can argue the fact in court, saying that siding is not structural because it holds, does not hold up the house. Is it, is your insurance company gonna be upset? Absolutely, because water will get in the house, and then you're gonna have to file claims, but you can deem that it is not structural. Same thing with replacement windows, same thing with.
Well, that can be structural.
How so? Because that's still the same frame as the original.
Well, we, we. Well, not always, we've got one in here that they said they were gonna replace nine windows, and when we went through the contract, they were gonna make it.
Figure?
Open up the wall.
Well, that's different.
And, you know, so.
That's different.
You have to be careful of some of these.
Yeah, direct replacement.
I'm talking like direct replacement windows, where you're not touching the, the actual original framing of the original old windows.
You can change that or perceive it for that one, I just.
Oh, yeah, I just, I just wanna put like an eight foot picture window in my house, on a old like, two, like what, two foot wide, three foot wide window? Opening? Yeah, that's structural, cause you're cutting just a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I'm just gonna let you know, cause this, the thing that's not required, when I, I just.
Did not watch, yeah, I wanted to.
That's just a reference for, from the myth too.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're not gonna, plus we are in the ninth edition, that's old, so.
So what are they?
Some of these are by law, they're used to.
Where are they going with this thing? Is this like something that's gonna go in front of the, the some?
Yeah, I think.
I was reading most of that.
Um, it doesn't have to, it has to go before town meeting, but it does not have to.
Pass?
Um, no, it doesn't have to have a public hearing with us performing it out.
Now, now.
But it has to be voted on though, right?
At town meeting.
Right. Right.
Now, would this be building, electric, plumbing, like all permits?
Uh plumbing, electric and gas have their separate laws.
Right, yeah, so they're not discussing that, if there's any.
I don't think.
So are they doing any more apartments?
They're just.
They're relaxing it.
We're trying to find out what we've been doing for the last fifteen years with that.
Legal?
Or I should say, not necessarily legal, but some of the conditions.
A public hearing every five years with a notification to a butts?
That's what they wanna do now.
I think it's every three right now, right?
I just.
Five.
Oh, it is five.
I just may take away the five year term altogether, just make it a single trial.
Right?
Yep. Because it's already used.
Well, this is what needs to be brought up to the board of selectmen, see what we wanna do.
Well, it's already in there.
Well, no, that's something I wrote up, no, that's, I wrote that up.
It's what the zoning board.
Just as a throw instance, this is what could be done.
A throw instance?
Yes.
So if we were gonna rehash all this stuff with three of us out of five here?
It still goes to town meeting, still has to have a public hearing.
Still goes to town meeting, still has to do all this.
It's just to start some type of proposal, discussion on what type of um.
There's absolutely zero reason for permit for an in-law apartment to be granted after the initial in-law apartment is built. Unless they're changing it, at which point, that goes back to the suffrage of.
Right. So.
When is building permit required?
Right.
The problem is, is they're trying to change too much.
Hmm.
You throw too much at the town at a time, and then suddenly, the first one gets a yes, and all the other ones get a no. But I think time limit permits. It really, it really, it's a. Full, full renewal? Why make, why go through the same process for a renewal that you have to go for, go through?
We discussed this a little bit at one of the selectmen meetings.
Hmm.
And uh, I, I, I think it should be a by right. Yeah, yeah. I think that's how to voice my opinion.
Think that's how a lot of people kinda voice it, they, yeah.
Yeah.
They ask, y'all should have to share one separate, they were saying you, you shouldn't have to share one, one common area.
The common zone. It makes, it makes it undesirable.
Cause you. Yeah, they basically said that you kinda wanna keep your, kinda keep the whole, you know, your extended family or your, whatever. Your family kinda separately from here, regardless, you want your privacy, let's put it that way.
Right.
This common area is the door. Share this door just like they shared this door.
Um, okay, um.
Put a shelf in front.
Actually, somebody came in the other day about Patrick Lane, that the last lot um had been sold in December. And he apparently is also buying a house that's already um established and want to know about like, is the town holding bonds, what's going on? Cause the road's not finished, Pasture Lane is one of the ones that we just can't seem to get finished, so nothing can. I'm not even sure if they can actually sell it without coming back to the town, because the town's actually holding it, it can't be released.
Right.
As far as.
So he sold the lot, but he doesn't have it?
He, yeah, I, I think so, that's what this, some.
Okay, cause that's the way.
Some random guy came into the office, so I just wanna let you know about that, um, that we're currently holding it. Um, I'm gonna have to probably send a letter out to the developer saying that it's being held and. The one person that actually was thinking about buying it, we did explain it to him that it's being held and can't do anything with it until.
Yeah, they shouldn't even advertise it.
They, at that point, they're gonna have to put up a bond, so they can pave the road before we can let any building permits go.
Right.
So they're gonna have to come back to the planning board, put up a bond.
Get their, their lease.
Let's get the road done, and then.
Yeah.
I mean, the sidewalks.
Pasture Lane is, gotta, I must've started before, I.
Totally before us.
I'm not even familiar with.
It was before even I came on, and I've been here twelve.
Oh, wow, it's been that long? That is forever.
Yeah.
So we're, we're, town is.
I don't remember.
Let's see, let's see.
A summit or something, maybe, or a, that's maybe.
We're gonna go. Yeah, I was, I was only, do you know if it's, if it's part of a subdivision, like a spur?
Small subdivision.
But it's, it's just, it's own road, it's not part of a bigger thing, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but if it's been that long, that's a, that's a tough one.
First thing that comes up on Google.
It's on Hudson Street.
It's been forever.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate that.
Uh, okay, so it must be.
It's the first lot on the right.
It's the first, that's the first left.
It's a really.
Oh, Hudson's Road, you never go down.
That's exactly right.
That's cause that turn, like.
Well, yeah, and you're like Halifax, Hanson, Eastbridge Road, then back to Hanson, back to Halifax, and like, it's kinda confusing down there, I don't go down there.
Oh. Yeah.
Nice houses, though.
I don't go down there.
Um.
That brings us to Burridge.
Burridge Pond, I sent you guys some emails regarding Burridge Pond, um.
Yeah.
Town is looking to possibly sell it to um Division of Fisheries and Wildlife.
They're gonna sell it completely?
I don't know what.
I thought it said parcel.
Part of it, yeah.
This is parcel.
Cause the, cause the options.
But let's put it this way, they're looking to obtain it back from us.
Okay.
Right.
Now, this is.
What do we get from it?
I think that this has something, that has.
The town.
Yeah, what do we get currently?
This has a lot of history, though, I believe it's part of this.
Large?
It's not big.
It could be. No, it isn't big, cause I can see my.
Yeah, I think I'm way over that.
Yeah, that one's mine.
Is it?
No, no, the, the one I can see right here is mine, not, not the one up right now.
Okay. Um, sorry, I don't know a whole lot about that, but I did send you guys email links, uh, to the bars to the Burridge Pond, possible sale, so.
That's why I'm.
Yeah. Yeah.
You guys have emails that you can read at your.
I say sell it.
Leisure.
I mean, Fisheries and Wildlife will maintain it, I mean, not saying that we don't maintain it, I'm just saying that they'll maintain it. And like if we, if that takes a little bit off of us to take care of, I mean, the state will take care of it. But I'm thinking, what do we get from it currently, it being like a.
Well, we don't own Burridge Pond, so.
No, so then what do we?
But is Burridge off the island, is that, that's that property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe that years ago, they bought a huge chunk off of Hanson. And the, and I might have this confused, but I think that they can't even get to it, so without the Halifax parcel, I don't even know if like.
They do have access right now, from Halifax, but before they, they were having some issues with the neighbor next door.
Oh, okay.
So a lot of them had to come through Hanson.
Oh, okay.
But this isn't, I don't think the parcel that they're trying to retain is completely connected to it, and it's very.
Why not?
I think the, the other thing, if I read it right, was we have no hunting in there right now?
I.
It's posted?
Don't know.
And they wanna open it up to hunting and fishing in the section, or that's one of the things that they wanna provide continuing access for.
In Burridge? Yeah.
Just make sure that.
I was like, Porridge is a pretty popular place for.
Yeah, it is.
Hunters, I wouldn't go there, but I mean.
I, I made the mistake of trying to hunt in the woods across.
Yeah, it's bad, it's tough?
No, it's the, the gun.
Yeah, Hanson.
Hanson Run Gun Club out there, they were having like, machine gun and cannon day the day I was out there in the woods.
Half a mile down.
Yeah.
It's like, noth, no, I didn't see a squirrel, let's just put it that way.
So I'll um update you guys on the, uh, or remind you guys about the board of selectmen's meeting on Tuesday.
That's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
What, what are, what is required or wanted from us from, as far as Burridge is concerned, considered?
Just, it's just FYI, if you had any interest in it as planning board.
Okay.
Can we buy it?
You got two hundred grand?
Don't.
Do we get, do we got the budget uh for the planning board to buy?
No. I doubt it.
Yeah.
Set up a private.
Well, right now Halifax.
Private reserve?
I know, but if the planning board can buy it.
Oh, it's a. Okay.
Wants to pay a gun.
Do you have planning board picnic, though?
Do some, do a bill.
We never spend our budget, we always get it back.
That's the way it should be.
Should we take out an eighty year loan with that budget?
Motion to pay WB Mason for office supplies to the tune of thirty nine dollars and seventy seven cents.
Motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that for toner or paper?
Um.
Dude, toner would be way more.
Uh, I had to get calendar.
Yeah, toner would add a zero.
Calendars and a few other things, um, and we have one meeting minutes at the three, you could actually do.
Make an motion to approve meeting minutes for twelve, twenty, one, seventeen.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ooh, I get the official one?
Sure.
It's cause she thought I was special.
They probably.
Wait, you have the official copy? What? Aloney.
Dude. Wrong you.
Wrong you.
This is my first time, I actually got the day wrong the other day, and I'm like, dude, of all things, you would've expected me to get that.
Oh.
I'm still waiting to use my stand for.
See, the problem with this is, we would have to have this ready for Tuesday, right?
No.
No?
Or could just be ready for the town meeting after the fact?
Thank you. Yeah, well, again, it's gonna basically be up to discussion and then we'll probably go stop. Getting it written out, that was just a thought. Um, and I gave you guys um what you're gonna need for ethics certifications are gonna be used to be done and signatures in May, which I've. Um, and I gave you guys um what you're gonna need for ethics certifications are gonna be used to be done and signatures in May, which I have.
Right, already done, right.
But for me, for your certification, you'll have to just do that.
I never have to do that again.
No, every two years, buddy.
Certification every two years.
But never doing it again.
So when I find like a hundred people to vote for you.
You threatened the last guy with that.
Anything else?
I think emotions in order.
I thought I heard. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make motion to adjourn.
Second that.
I have a motion to adjourn? I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Johnny, Johnny, uh, prides, let me provide seconds.
That's it.
We're clear.